Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Portsmouth School Committee meeting of Tuesday, June 9. If you'll please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our first responders and troops in harm way. And the flag is in Dr. Kenworthy's. Oh, there it is. Okay. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. We had an executive session, excuse me, prior to this meeting. No votes are taken, but we did recess. We will be continuing this meeting after the conclusion of our public meeting. So I will be moving the motion to seal the minutes down until after the executive session has concluded. So please let the record reflect that all school committee members are present. And don't have to do the emergency exits, right? Okay, we had a wonderful, wonderful graduation. Many, many thanks to the high school, to the teachers, the staff, the administrators, the parents, the students, everybody who worked really hard on that, to the polo grounds, you know, for letting the high school hold their driving graduation, to the preparing of the video with drone footage. And I know Lisa Jansen and her crew were out at, what was it, 5 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, decorating the one-way so that when they drove up to actually get their diplomas, they were met with balloons and flags and individual signs with their pictures and a painted one-way. It was really very special. In fact, I heard a lot of people saying, maybe we should start some new traditions. I think Shelley Bexalvera was on a gong as they drove off and crossed the finish line. And I think everybody got a really big kick out of that. So I know it's not what they intended or what they thought they were going to have for graduation when this senior year started, but kudos really to everybody for, you know, trying to make it as special and as memorable as possible. So Dr. Kenworthy and I passed out the diplomas on Saturday as they drove past. And you could just see the real excitement and tears and joy in both graduates and I think parents faces too. So again, really big thanks to everybody who was involved. I also have a shout-out. The Portsmouth Middle School is selling masks, the Portsmouth Middle School PTO with, I don't know if you can see it here, but a Portsmouth P on it for $10. And if you're interested in purchasing one of those masks, you can look at the Portsmouth PMS PTO. And they will be happy to sell you one. The last thing I have on my chairperson's remarks is we had our Rhode Island Association of School Committees annual meeting. Ms. McDade, Mr. Ferber and myself were able to attend that. I believe Mr. Badney was working the polls that day. So I really would like to take a moment and recognize Fred Ferber. He completed his term as Secretary Treasurer of this association. So not only was he volunteering to help out Portsmouth and the school committee, but he gave a lot of his time to help the state association as well. So a big round of applause to you, Fred.
I offered to stay, but I couldn't stay on. Just as Secretary Treasurer, I had to move up to President-elect. And President-elect would have been fine too, but I didn't want to lead anybody to believe I was able to take the presidency. I just decided to leave because the bylaws wouldn't let you stay on.
Well, we appreciate all the work you did for, on behalf of that organization too. So you don't have a certificate for you though, but you have our things. The other thing that was really interesting, and Karen, Fred, feel free to jump in here if I miss something. They had Senator Ryan Pearson talk about the state of the education budget and a lot of the uncertainty that was surrounding that, you know, having to do with kind of the current hole in the state finances and the fact that they were waiting to see what would happen next year. So the real message was kind of stay tuned from mid-June and we hopefully will know more, but a lot's going to really depend on, you know, whether or not more aid or assistance comes from the federal level, depending on what cuts might be. I know Superintendent Kenworthy has heard and that, you know, districts might have up to 25% of their state aid withheld next year if there's a budget shortfall. So this is obviously very concerning, but we really don't know right now. But it was a good meeting and again, congratulations to Fred for his term of office. All right, moving on to subcommittees, health and wellness. Mr. Payero.
The Health and Wellness Subcommittee met on May 1st. We received our usual updates from the various schools and community partners that were present. The most pressing issue that we had that afternoon was our initial review of the updates of the health and wellness policy. We did a first read and obtained edits. Still principal Viveras, I had to stop myself. Myself will be working on the second revision, hope to have it to the committee at our first meeting in September. Steve, I think you're going to probably have to unmute Emily.
Emily, it looks like you're muted.
My dog was starting to bark, so I was trying to mute that out while Carlos was talking. Sorry about that.
Don't worry, my kids talk over me all day.
Okay. Capital Subcommittee, Mr. Shears.
Okay, the Capital Planning Subcommittee met on May 28th, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. We discussed a plan in regards to what has occurred in the world the last several months and its implications to our school system's needs. Our entire meeting was held with an unanswered budget influenced by events from the state. We examined a schedule provided by our OPM. And that was the, went into the background of our 66-plus million proposed project and the financing of that in various ways. And then a discussion followed as to how adaptable that plan was to our current needs, affordability and potential public support. We discussed how adaptable our existing improvements were to current needs. We discussed what basic improvements on a scaled-down capital plan could be made to our existing facilities such as air conditioning to existing buildings to make them usable all year round. We requested the controller to solicit bids, estimates, what have you, so that we could understand what costs we would be considering if we decided to go down that road. We discussed the fact that there were many unanswered questions that RIDE has not offered guidance in regards to their outline for education in the fall. We all realized the urgency of a plan and decided to meet once we had better specifics from the state. We also directed the administration to create an improvement maintenance schedule to address the current operational necessities of our school system. And I'd like to point out, Studio Jade had addressed when we were working on our plan that if we were just to do our maintenance existing instead of going into any major projects, then we would be looking over $20 million over a period of time, whether it be five years to 10 years or whatnot. So it's not the fact that if we don't go with the large plan right now, that we're down to even Steven, that there aren't any costs that we have to put into the schools. So they comment that we have this big surplus. I don't know where this big surplus really is if we address some of these maintenance issues that we have on an ongoing basis. So we're looking at, as soon as we get more direction from the state and what's going on for the fall, that it's imperative that we have another meeting to address and be flexible in those regards. And so that were the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you, thank you. All right, those are the subcommittee reports, appreciate that. And now on to the best part of the agenda. We have some wonderful recognitions here, so let me turn it over to Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. We really do have a lot to celebrate this evening. So since our last meeting in May, we did get to announce something that Mrs. Little and I had heard just prior to the official announcement, but we'll be having the Rhode Island Teacher of the Year representing the entire state of Rhode Island in our ranks next year. So I think that public announcement has been out for a few weeks now and people are well aware. It's Ashley Adamson, who is a third-grade teacher at Hathaway School. She has been with us in the district for a number of years, also was a teacher at Portsmouth Middle School for a while. And Ashley was our Portsmouth Teacher of the Year last year. So that put her in the selection for State Teacher of the Year. And so she progressed, we receive regular updates that she was progressing. We were not surprised through that process. And then a few weeks ago, received the wonderful news that she was selected. I believe the first ever Portsmouth teacher, from what I've been able to research. So she will represent the entire state of Rhode Island next year and be eligible for National Teacher of the Year as well. I can only imagine with that selection process, it's like Ashley, but congratulations.
Yay, congratulations. I know Mrs. Little was so excited and were you surprised? Oh, Steve, can we unmute?
I think I did it. Did I do it?
I got it.
Beat the system. Yeah, no, thank you so much. Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. Yes, I was very surprised. It caught me completely off-guard. But, you know, I'm so honored and so excited to represent the state.
Awesome, awesome. Well deserved.
Thank you for being there.
Yeah. And she had a parade afterwards, so not only did she have the surprise ceremony, but then it was your class that paraded for you, I believe, right?
Yes, and they didn't know, so they were finding out as they came around when they saw the banner.
Lot of surprises that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Ashley.
Thank you so much.
So we also this evening wanted to, as we do typically, this time, this is our last official meeting. We'll have one more meeting in June, but the school year will have officially wrapped up by then. So usually at this meeting every year, we recognize our retiring teachers and staff members. Again, in normal times, prior to our current situation, we would have had, held a little reception prior to the start of this meeting, but we are obviously unable to do that this year. But definitely wanted to formally recognize all of our retiring PHS teachers and staff members. So I'm just going to read through the list of who those individuals are. And hopefully I have their number of years of service in the district correct. But so retiring this year from the Portsmouth School Department will be Eileen Emerald. She is a science teacher at Portsmouth High School and has been with the district for 26 years. Kathleen Mickey Beebe, also a science teacher at Portsmouth High School and longtime Science Department Chair. And she has been with the district for 29 years. Leslie Chwinski, current Melville PE teacher, spent a number of years at the middle school as well. And she is retiring after 16 years in the district. Vicki Flaherty, kindergarten teacher at Hathaway Elementary School, also had a recent celebration at Hathaway. And if you read the article, you might have picked up on Vicki started her career. She's been in the district for 20 years when she was first hired in the district. The Prudence Island School was still in full operation as part of Portsmouth officially. So Vicki was the teacher in the one-room schoolhouse over on Prudence Island and is now retiring after having, you know, been fully experienced in distance learning. So a lot. Janet Casparian, also a science teacher at Portsmouth High School, is retiring after 18 years in the district. Deborah Seddon, math teacher at Portsmouth Middle School, will be retiring after 20 years in the district. And then we also have a few retirements officially, employees who have been with us on the non-certified side in the district for a number of years. So Janet Blais Holmes, who is a paraprofessional or registered behavior technician at Portsmouth High School, has been in the district 19 years. So she's been with us, obviously currently and back to when we were part of the regional specialized program, but consecutively in Portsmouth for those 19 years. Mr. Edmund Lima is one of our maintenance workers. He's leaving us after 29 years as well. He's right up there with Mrs. Beebe. Darlene Quinn is our payroll administrator. So she keeps everybody very happy with those functions running. She's been with the district for seven years, but will be officially retiring. And then lastly, John Souza, who is a custodian currently at Melville Elementary School, leaving us after 18 years with the district. So thank you to all those individuals for their service to the district and we wish them the best of luck.
Wow, by any chance, did you add up all those years?
I did not, but.
I'm guessing we're in several hundreds of years of service to Portsmouth when we add that up. I see several here, so thank you, thank you so much. And we just wish everybody the best in retirement and appreciate everything that you've all done to make the district a warm and vibrant and awesome place to be. So thank you, thank you, everybody. And now like you can go to Florida and relax, right? Okay, and we have certificates that we're mailing out.
We do, yep.
Yeah.
We do, we'll have certificates that'll be in the mail for those recognitions. And our last recognitions are some student recognitions this evening. And again, typically with all of the end-of-year events, we've talked about how great your graduation was under the circumstances with what we were able to put together last Friday and Saturday. So during Senior Week, we traditionally have an award ceremony in which various senior awards and scholarships are presented. So again, this year, that event had to be conducted virtually. But each year, there are some student leadership award winners recognized by the school committee. And there's a small monetary scholarship that goes with this award as well. And typically, it's a male and a female recipient. And as I was running through the list of possibilities, and there were, there are many possibilities this year, but it was hard for Mr. Amaral and I, we ended up going with three students. So Matthew Lopes, who has been a PHS student liaison to the school committee, is going to be, or is a recipient of that award this year. Also Lauren Griffiths, who has been representing, you know, she's, I know she's spoken at various times to the school committee, but she's also had a very important task. She's represented students across the state of Rhode Island, but then you're representing us in Portsmouth as well as a student representative to the Rhode Island Board of Education. So every month she attends those meetings and is able to provide a student perspective there. And then lastly, for student leadership recognitions, Fiona Dooley, who has during her time at the high school, served in many, many various capacities as a student representative when the high school has needed her. So congratulations to those students and their families and we wish them the best of luck.
And thank you, thank you, Dr. Kenworthy. We'll be mailing out certificates and most importantly, the check to help you with your post-high school plans. You know, these clapping hands and thumbs ups are good, but I think we need like fireworks or exploding emojis or something to show how real proud we are of all of you. And again, thank you for taking time when there's so much else you could be doing your senior year to really work on being a leader at Portsmouth High School and with the school committee and the state. So awesome job, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations. Then just one more, officially, we wanted to recognize since, again, this is our last meeting before the school year officially ends. So that last meeting in June is typically one of our least-attended meetings, right? Maybe that will change in the new virtual format. But we wanted to make sure we recognized our PHS student liaisons in case they're not able to join us at the last meeting. So again, you Lopes, we mentioned, has been serving that capacity. Matthew is a senior, so he will be leaving us. But then also Raiden Pardo DeZella, Raiden's a junior, hopefully she's back with us next year. But if not, we just wanted to make sure we officially recognize both of them for serving in that role this year.
We really do appreciate hearing your comments and updates from the high school. And so again, thank you for taking time to do that. Good luck with everything next year as well.
Yes, thank you guys for everything, including the scholarships. Very helpful.
Good, good. It'll buy one book, maybe. I'm joking. All right, is there, Steve, is anybody raising a hand for public comments?
Let's see, we do, Ms. Jansen. Want me to unmute her?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Jansen.
Need to state your name and address, please, for the record and unmute yourself.
She's well experienced at this though, right?
Okay, here we go. Yes, it's on mute. There we go.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Lisa Jansen, 9 Richard Drive, which is actually where I am right now. But I just wanted to give a heartfelt thank you to you, Emily, to you, Tom, to Joe Amaral. As completely unorthodox as this graduation was, I think for the very first time in the history of Portsmouth High School, you've allowed the parents to really get on board. You listened, we listened to our constituents and you listened to us. And I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for letting us participate and share in this experience. Make it truly, truly special for everyone. As a parent, I just wanted to thank you.
Well, you're welcome, but I think the students had the ideas and the parents did all the work. So I guess we're just getting the thanks, right? And the administrators too, so, but it really was a, it was a nice ceremony. Any other comments, any other public comments?
Thank you for your help as well, Lisa.
At the moment, there are no other comments other than the thank yous and congratulations, but, and no raised hands.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the superintendent's update.
We get the student liaison officially, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Matt, I wasn't, go ahead.
I don't know if Raiden is on as well, Steve.
She is not. Okay, Matthew.
Hi, yeah, Raiden's, I actually texted her, she said she's at work right now, so she won't be on it. But I think we can both, I don't know if she saw what happened with the graduation. I thought it was awesome. Huge thank you to everyone for that. It can't be overstated, it was excellent under the circumstance, what you guys put together. And the diploma pickup was awesome too. Great work with the one-way and the little, the little things you put in your yard now looked great. Thank you, everyone. We had a great year.
Thank you, thank you. Something I was going to say, all right, no. Thank you, Matt. All right, public, no, I missed public. Now we're moving on to the superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Copeland, again. So a few items update. So typically just give a personnel update if there have been any changes in that area since our last meeting. Obviously, we are winding up the school year, so there's typically not a lot of changes this year. So the only thing that's come up, so we already recognized Mr. John Souza with our retiring employee. So he officially had put in his notice right after the last meeting. We've already recognized him again. And just an update on the Melville Principal Search with Mrs. Viveras moving into the Assistant Superintendent role. And we are, we will be looking to fill the Melville Principal role. So just want to make sure everyone connected to that school community knows that that process is in full swing. The posting for the position has officially closed. Mrs. Viveras and Mrs. are actually leading the group that will be conducting interviews for that position. We set an aggressive timeline to try and have a final candidate to be able to present at the next school committee meeting on June 23rd. And hopefully we're able to stick to that. If not, then we'll figure out what we have to do to get a meeting to, you know, officially bring that person on board. But things are moving along well in that capacity, so just wanted to give that update.
Did you, did you have a good number of candidates?
We did, I believe close to 50, correct? It's here, not here, close to 50, so 40, in the 40s.
47.
Yeah, okay. Good. So next in my updates is, so usually, so we talk about, you know, it's been listed as school closure and distance learning for this meeting and going forward, right? It's really going to be about distance learning and school reopening. So we had a lot of planning to put, put at the great celebration that we've talked about for the PHS class of 2020 together. But also, we've had, you know, a lot of, as much as we can at this point anyway, a lot of thought in planning going into, okay, what do we need to start getting together for the reopening of schools next year? So everyone knows that the school year is going to officially wrap up on June 18th. That will end distance learning for this current school year. And we are starting to form, from the guidance we've been given so far from the Rhode Island Department of Education, they are obviously working very closely with the Rhode Island Department of Health and, you know, looking at the guidance that comes down from the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control. So we have been given some guidance on kind of the structure of what that district planning committee should look like. I sent out some information and a communication to the community earlier this week. So three main areas will drive our planning. So there's an overall planning in Governance Subcommittee, if you will, that will just make sure that we're adhering to all of the latest, keeping up with all of the latest guidance that's coming out. There's a Subcommittee that will be specifically looking at teaching and learning and the various supports that have to go into that area. And then a Subcommittee that will be focused on wellness and safety. Of course, making sure that at whatever point we're ready to bring students and staff back into our schools, we're making sure that we have all the proper measures in place to keep everybody safe and protected. So right now, we've asked all of our schools to start to form a school-based team. We're going to pull up membership from those school-based teams for kind of the district steering committee, if you will. We're going to try to get a meeting of that group before June 30th and then have some firmer plans in place. We'll play some updated guidance as we get ready to head into summer. Again, there's a lot of, you know, different ideas that are being thrown around right now, but, you know, nothing firm that I can give you. The overall goal is to, is to definitely bring students and staff back into our school buildings when it is safe to do so. Absent that, we know that we just need to have, you know, we need to kind of build on the experiences from these past few months and make sure that if we have to employ distance learning, remote learning, those kinds of things, that we have, you know, all students and families with the devices and the capacity to do so and that our teaching and learning, our practices are able to seamlessly transition from when students would be present in our buildings in front of teachers to if the, if the learning has to take. in front of teachers to if the if the learning has to take place in a remote setting. And so, of course, I will be sure to pass along updates as we get further along in our planning process.
Any, any school committee comment on that?
Yeah, I, I would like to know if there's been any kind of way to judge how successful or not our distance learning program has been, because we've now been doing it for how many days as to what the absorption is of the classes? Are there any tests? Are there any quizzes? Are there any reports? Is there anything that we can judge? Because if we keep doing this, and the absorption is not right, then we shouldn't keep doing the same thing, at least in my thought. So how are we able to see how successful or not we are with this?
Sure. So we've, you know, we've been trying to to survey along the way as much as possible, right? Staff, parents, students, you know, I think to certainly agree at the high school and middle school level as well. So certainly, we took a lot of that feedback. If you can remember me explaining, kind of, we had, we, the whole distance learning, you know, throughout the entire state really happened in three phases. The first phase was kind of in the immediate weeks after March 1. And we had to kind of put everything in place to start distance learning. We had a second phase that took us through the month of April. So we, you know, we tried to improve upon things from that first phase as much as possible. But really, spending that that last phase, you know, throughout throughout May here in these last weeks of the school year in June, which we, you know, again, we tried to make as many improvements as we could. I think we've identified areas that we know we need to continue to improve upon if this concerning is going to be employed. As far as assessment this year is, so there's definitely been assessment at the classroom level, right? With the typical classroom assessments teachers would give. The state did suspend all all state standardized testing for this year. So we wouldn't have, and we won't have going into next year, those scores to fall back on. And then also, we, we made a decision. It was optional. We made a decision in Portsmouth with everything else going on. So our, what we call our interim assessment. So for us, that's STAR, right? Every district uses a little bit different system sometimes for that. But we did not give our our final or spring STAR assessment, because we just had never given it remotely before. So STAR, you know, and it wasn't made to be given remotely. They did open that process up. We are kind of making sure that as we roll into next year, we'll we'll be ready to do that and kind of learn, be able to build upon the lessons learned. Anybody who did do that remote administration of STAR, those types of assessments did. But um, so, so the main assessment kind of of how things are going has come from the the regular classroom assessments and grading that teachers are doing, and then any survey feedback we've been able to collect.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Holtman.
Dr. Kenworthy, when you were talking about, you know, if we're ready to move remotely, you were talking about remote learning and distance learning. Does that mean you're thinking like a blend next year? Or are you referring to if we were to have to close again, we could?
Yeah. Again, without hard and in in fast, if we not know, it's probably a good time to to mention that that this week, I think, within the next few days, in her 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 regular press briefings, Governor Armando is supposed to speak to, you know, the reopening of school next year and, you know, some further guidance that may be coming down from the state. But basically, right now, the the best thing that we've been kind of directed to plan for, and as we're starting to build our plans, is that we just need to, we need to be able, you know, we just need to be ready for anything, you know, the the ultimate goal is to be able to kind of, you know, bring students and staff into our buildings. But if if we're told that we're, we're not ready to do so, or if that that maybe it looks like a staggered start, there is, again, this isn't definite, but there is some talk about maybe bringing back the the early elementary grades first, you know, and kind of, you know, making sure we have have everything in place. Obviously, there's a lot tied in, right, in those grades to parents being able to to fully re-enter the workforce as needed. But but with that, you know, that that there could be the possibility that older, older grades, as you start to get into the upper middle school and high school grades, you know, maybe are not, you know, starting the the school year off with us. So, you know, I think whatever, I think the main lessons that we're trying to build upon from, you know, distance learning these past few months is that whatever setting that students and teachers are in, whether it's physically in our buildings, or if they, you know, they can't be in our buildings because we're not able to bring them back, you know, the the teaching and learning has to be able to take place as seamlessly as possible, no matter the setting.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that regardless of parents getting back to the workforce, I just don't think at the elementary school level, so you can replicate what what happens in a classroom with parents and kids. I, I think we have to do whatever we can to get. I can't speak for the high school level or middle school, but I can speak for, you know, the younger grades, it, they have to be in the classroom if we can.
Yeah, every, everything that you're expressing, I, and I believe, again, and I just don't want to get too far out in front of official announcements. Nothing that I've heard yet is official, but maybe we'll have more clarity when Governor Armando speaks later this week. But, you know, if you read the tea leaves, so to speak, so far, you know, they they are definitely pushing us to be ready to bring back the elementary grades first.
Ms. McDate has a question. She has her hands up.
Ms. McDate.
I just wanted to make a comment. When we, when we talk about looking back at this experience of of remote learning and evaluating the job that we've done, obviously, we're a school district, we're in the, in the, the role of educating kids and imparting information to them and helping them to make advances academically. But as we look at that, I, I really don't want to lose sight of the other functions that the school and the teachers have served over the last few months. They do all the time over the last.
Karen, you are cutting out. So maybe you could start over again at all the other functions?
I'll turn my video off, and hopefully that will help.
Yeah, go back to all the other functions.
So, okay, so if I can, all the other functions that the teachers and the schools have been doing over the last few months, that they do all the time, but have really come into sharp focus over the last few months, including providing food to families, providing support to families, being able to check in on students and families and how they're doing health-wise and how they're doing emotionally. And I, I want us to not get so caught up in being concerned about academic results that we lose sight of those things as well.
No, good, good points, Ms. McDate, absolutely. Yeah, the, and the only thing I see there. So with with all of that, with the, with the committees that we know we need to have in place, what we need to focus on, and hopefully, again, there's, will be, I'm sure opportunities will kind of spin off from those. We will, we will try to make sure, you know, that that we we make as many opportunities as possible for, you know, not only our own staff, but also parents from our our school's community to take part in in some of the planning if they're able to.
You know, maybe, maybe one thing we might, or one idea, as we get into July and August, is to schedule a couple of like Zoom town meetings, so that, you know, you might just be available for a question and answer session if parents have a question, or, you know, maybe Melville has a, has a Zoom town meeting. Because I think if we, if we don't get that information out there until August, that's going to be kind of hard for parents, you know. But but I know where it's a moving situation. But I'm just, I think we need to do a lot more communication in the summer than we normally do.
Yeah, absolutely. I will, I will not wait till August to to communicate the information out. So as again, I've kind of, I've shared with you, you know, through tonight and through various communications, you know, basically, everything that we have so far, we're not holding anything back. It's just we're waiting for that that further direction and guidance, which I believe should start with the announcements that Governor Armando is supposed to make in the next few days.
Okay, moving on.
Hey, next, I just wanted to include in my update. So it's an update on the FY '21, so next year's budget. So we do have tomorrow evening is the official town budget hearing. And that, that is typically immediate, takes place every year, will happen remotely this year. So that agenda is posted on the town website. There's a link as, you know, for this meeting. If you, you know, join on the link, you'll be able to follow along. But this is kind of what we consider to be the the last step in the town of just making sure that the budget is, you know, officially approved. Everything is ready to go. Citizens are given one last opportunity to offer comment. And and several of us were able to attend and participate last night as well. And there was, there was just a regular town council meeting. So there was some budget information discussed there as well, but no changes to our budget were made. So we know, we have a pretty good picture of our, of our budget for next year, heading, heading into the town budget hearing. So you were, you know, we've been able to work very collaboratively with the town. We, right now, as things sit, we'd be looking at a 3.2 increase over last year's town allocation. We feel we did have to make some adjustments over the last few months as the town was updating their revenue projections. But again, we worked collaboratively to be able to do that. And so we, you know, we're thankful for the cooperation that we have with the town. We feel like our budget is in a good place for next year. And and then also, we do have an approved capital request now for a little over $400,000. That would allow us to continue to make needed improvements, just kind of the the year-to-year improvements that in in regular meetings that we need to keep up with our schools. So again, that's kind of, as, you know, we can only kind of move forward with the information that we had. So that's everything on on the town side, which, again, after tomorrow's annual budget hearing, that will kind of move one step closer to being finalized. Really, the the big question that's going to remain after that, in a typical year, we know what our number for state aid is. We, we receive in this district about $3.8 million in total in in various forms of state aid. You know, again, we, we've built our budget off of that number we've been given. The town, again, knows what that number is, and as they've worked with us. But again, this is, this is not a typical year. So unfortunately, as we move into the summer, and and what we're being told right now is that the general Rhode Island General Assembly is probably not going to make any final decisions on the budget until July. So this is a year that we, we could be told at the state level that our budget is going to be reduced further with that, with that stated that we're supposed to receive. So we would have to go back and make adjustments from there. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. But tomorrow evening's meeting is very important, and just will help us get through that that final stage to, you know, to officially approve the town budget.
It's, it's never a bad idea to have supporters of the schools attend those budget meetings.
Okay. All right. So last item that I had on my list for this evening was, just wanted to to further comment on, I, you know, I did put out again, earlier this week, a statement. You know, I kind of struggled a little bit with whether it was something.
Maybe, maybe you could read that statement.
Sure, I do. Do you have it here? We can say, but by no means, you know, did, I think this was, you know, was I trying to make a definitive statement one way or another for Portsmouth? I think we have, this is a collective conversation that we need to continue to have moving forward. And I know, you know, as as the leader of this district, you know, although I've, I've been in the district for, you know, I was in the district for five years in my previous role as Assistant Superintendent, and there were certainly experiences and conversations that I've had with families. I, I knew coming into this position that that this was an area that we needed to work on, you know, in the district, and it was certainly part of my plans moving forward. I think, obviously, a lot of what we've talked about tonight has also made this less than a traditional start to my my superintendency. But with that, with the work that I know that we need to do, the statement that I put out earlier this week, right? "These are unprecedented times for our young people while they were still processing how to deal with having their lives uprooted with very little warning from COVID-19. They are now witnessing our nation's struggle with unresolved issues of racism, inequity, and violence. As the tragic deaths of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and too many others have shown, all schools need to work harder collectively, or to collectively teach our young people to honor the differences in others while celebrating the diversity that is truly a strength of our nation. We must never forget that we are raising the next generation of leaders, and we must give them the tools that will help guide us towards becoming a more compassionate and just society. The Portsmouth School Department is committed to providing safe, equitable, and supportive learning environments for each and every student. There are many teachable moments in the current situation that we will seek to use to educate our students, and we will never tolerate hatred or racism, and must model the ability to respect differences while also respecting the laws that govern our society." And then I just included, "Please encourage your children to reach out to a teacher, principal, school counselor, or other trusted adult if they need support, helping to navigate these uncertain times. And certainly, with with anything, if anyone in the PSD community has concerns in any of these areas that you would like to discuss with me, and my door, my lines of communication are always open. Feel free to contact me directly at any time." And I just close with, "I am proud to be the leader of this district and appreciate all that makes our community great." So again, I, I fully recognized, certainly before any of the most recent events, that this was, you know, these were conversations and areas that we needed to do more work on in this district. I fully planned to include that as I work going forward, and it definitely will be. Just as we were talking about the, you know, the the work that we know we need to do around bringing groups of people together around reopening, I think this is a great opportunity for us to bring members of our community together around these topics as well, and just make sure that, you know, we're doing the the best job in in these areas, teaching our young people in Portsmouth.
Thank you. I, I, I'm, I'm very appreciative that you did put out that statement. How do you envision both the self-assessment of the schools' curriculum, policies, practices, et cetera, taking place, and then the follow-up from that? I mean, now that we, what, how are we going to take some concrete steps in this area?
Yeah. So I, I think certainly kind of a a working group in this area. I know I've been in communication. I'm sure maybe even school committee members have have been, you know, getting communications from people in our community. Please feel free to direct those individuals my way. You know, we're kind of keeping a list right now. What we will, we will try to pull as many, many of those voices of people who want to participate as possible. I think there are a lot of tools out there that we can use for kind of, you know, self-assessments in these areas, if you will, to kind of get a a good, good kind of baseline of where we are in in some of these areas in our district, how we can improve your ways that we can incorporate things into our curriculum. You know, we've been looking at a lot of resources. I know all of our schools, I have, I've seen them kind of share out kind of age-appropriate resources on these topics. But, you know, I think there's a lot of vetting that we would need to do before we kind of fully endorse resources that we want to kind of officially share in these areas.
Not wanting to maybe put you on the spot here, but is this going to be maybe a priority goal or area for our new Assistant Superintendent?
I think absolutely. I think, again, as we, you know, we're wrapping up a lot of things with this school year and getting ready for the next one. But I would think as well, as, as, you know, one of the things that we do right at the beginning of the summer service, where is I work with, I'll work with the school committee on setting goals for next school year. I would think that this will definitely be included in 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 goals. And it's what we try to do with with those goals that I set, I make, make sure that they're goals that tie into, you know, our strategic plan, our work going on, but things that we know or want to drive the work going forward in all of our schools. But this is definitely one of those areas.
Thank you. I know. Thank you. I know, let me see if.
If you don't mind, I, I would like, and not to just ask a question.
Yeah, no, and I also want to see if there are any hands raised or, but go ahead, Carlos, you go first.
Yeah. No, I wanted to first thank the incoming assistant superintendent. We've already made it a priority in reviews, reviewing the, the wellness policy to make sure that we include equity language into that policy. So kudos to, to Liz before even getting into the role of being cognizant of it. And I, I did want to ask when to expect, I know that summer is coming upon us, but I, I, I don't want to let the statement die without inaction. And then at the end of the day, it just becomes as good as thoughts and prayers. And so I would love, Tom, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if there's any way that, especially in the coming days or weeks, I know that we have a lot of stuff to close up, if we can get like what that inventory looks like of what we're currently doing, whether even if it's something as simple as like, these are the diversity books in the high school English department, whatever it may be. And I, I, I don't want to let this issue get drowned out by whatever the next issue is.
Sure.
Our media cycle.
Yeah. So and I was already thinking, Mr. Pyero, that, and I know that you and Mrs. Viveros, you know, have had those conversations. And probably right now with, you know, current, you know, groups of committees that we have, the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. Again, there's, there are some good kind of build-up from the work that we're doing there. So, so maybe, you know, I'd be happy to sit with, with, you know, you as the chair of the Health and Wellness Committee, Mrs. Viveros. I think at this point, that can be kind of the start of our planning for how we want to move forward, heading into the summer months.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm just, any other?
We have one hand raised.
Okay, I can't see who the hand is, so please recognize.
So Ms. Sinclair, we're going to unmute you. And if you can just state your name and your address, that'll be great.
Hi, I apologize. My video's off because my, my screen keeps freezing, so I didn't want to get pushed out again. Sophia Sinclair, I live at 201 Ethel Drive, or I own 201 Ethel Drive, and we will live there very soon. I, I prepared some statements because I'm very passionate about this topic, and I just wanted to share this with the community. So, you know, obviously, we live in a majority white community, and many white students are barely exposed to African-American history through schooling. Learning about African-American history is essential to combating racism. And in a predominantly white community, the myths and stereotypes pushed by society will not be counted by exposure to a diverse community. We should take this opportunity to review our curriculum to ensure that the only time African-Americans show up is not just when discussing slavery, the Civil War, and civil rights. This treats the black experience as a separate entity in America. Students shouldn't have to ask where all the black people are the rest of the time in our history. Do we teach about redlining? Do we teach about the impacts of unequal economic policy? Are the massacres in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and Rosewood taught in our history classes? Are the Black Panthers painted in a negative light? Do we teach about the Black Panthers at all? Are we also championing black achievement in science, math, art, and music? We need to be sure that we teach a full and complicated history and not just about slavery, the Civil War, and the civil rights movement. Black history and contribution is so much more than that. And I can honestly say I have more to learn myself because my own education failed me. Students across the country are being taught half-truths and whitewashed versions of history. They are being robbed of the opportunity to see the rich contributions of the black community and what they are studying. The absence of black history and black contributions to America in its full form reinforces the idea that white stories are the story. We should broaden what is considered important to teach our students so that the default history of America and the world in general isn't a white male one, a persistent view that is reflected in both the power structures and the racial violence we are seeing to this day. We need to use our schools as a tool to dismantle the myth of a white America as the only truth of our past and present. I am no expert in this field. I'm just a concerned citizen and a mother of three children that will be, that are or will be in the school system. And I went through the school system as well. And I can honestly say, there is so much that I don't know, and I don't want that to happen to my kids.
Thank you, thank you. Can we, can we put your name down for maybe one of those committees?
Absolutely, yeah.
Awesome. I appreciate you taking the time and zooming in for the meeting. I, I, I do think, you know, it's, I'm, I'm hopeful that this is the start of not just many conversations, but also steps toward change and action as well. So, so thank you for, for that, that statement.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you for hearing me.
You bet. Mr. Ferber.
Dr. Copeland.
I just, I just have a comment. So I read Sophia's, Ms. Sinclair's email and listened to her comments. I totally agree with her. One of the problems with the standard history books is finding a book that properly treats racism. As many of us know, it has existed. But the reason I'm speaking up is at the current time, because of the circumstances, a number of periodicals have pointed to books, movies even. In fact, you went to Prime Video right now. You'd see a whole list of recommended movies that address the subject of racism. We should try to capture, you know, the, the, the subjects of those, both the movies and the books, that perhaps can be incorporated into some sort of a diversity education as we move forward. I mean, this is an optimal time because it's, it's front and foremost in many people's minds, most people's minds. So, so I really appreciate Mrs. Sinclair's comments. And I just wanted to, and the principal reason I say this, to like I say, most of the history textbooks, as I understand it, don't address that subject. They pass over many of the issues, like I suspect many of them don't even mention the Tulsa massacre. So, so that would just be my two cents.
Thank you. Steve, did you say somebody else had a hand up?
Yes, we have a Cody Sharp. So I'm going to unmute. Yep, go ahead, Michelle. Yes.
Thanks. I, so I, I just wanted to echo Sophia's.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sharp, Ms. Sharp, could you please state your name and your address? Thank you.
Yes, I'm, I'm Cody Sharp. I live at 223 Leaps Road in Portsmouth. And wanted to echo the comments. I don't have something formally prepared. But as a parent of a, a student in Hathaway, one comment that I'll make is that I, I was thrilled to see that already, right away this week, there was a, a message from Mrs. Dyer, the librarian, about books to go out to the children to start talking about racism and anti-racism with kids at the elementary level. And I think that our community has a tremendous opportunity as a largely white community. I think, you know, I really appreciate Dr. Copeland, what you said about being part of positive change. That I think the reason that this moment feels very different than other moments in history, in the history of, of race relations in our country is that white allyship is playing a much more significant role. And so, you know, looking at the faces tonight, looking at, at the faces in our community, I think that's one thing that we definitely need to acknowledge is both something that influences the way that we talk to our families and the way that we go through the educational system, but also an opportunity for us to use, many of us to use our privilege to, to move forward with positive change. And so, so I'd like to offer my, myself also as someone to be on a working group in, in some aspect or another. My, I have a son in kindergarten and another son who is, is younger, but eventually will be in the Portsmouth district. So I'm looking forward to being part of it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Kenworthy, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Nope, nope. I was just letting Ms. Sharp know you have her name.
All right.
Yeah, we have one more.
Yes.
Ms. Ejafusa, I'm going to unmute. Okay. No, maybe not.
Are you unmuting, Linda?
I, yeah, I did, but.
How about that? Okay, thank you. Linda Ujafusa, 155 Adams Drive. I am on the town council. We passed a resolution last night condemning the racism that we've been seeing recently, but also, of course, the historical individual and systemic racism that has been plaguing our society. I want to point out that in Portsmouth, we are fortunate to be the home of the First Rhode Island Regiment Monument and the First Rhode Island Slave History Medallion. And the individuals who are related, or who have been involved in celebrating that, the First Rhode Island Regiment and the slave, slave history are, have made themselves available, have said they wanted to work with the schools. I think I passed along their names last year to people in the history department. And so I just want to point out that there are individuals who in fact make their careers teaching black history and that we should reach out to them because they're right here in Portsmouth. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to acknowledge that several people in the community have reached out to me with, you know, similar offers and different resources. So again, I, I, we are keeping track of, of all of the names. And I will certainly let people know when we're ready to move forward with this, with this conversation.
Yeah. And, and I do think, you know, our, our strategic plan that we, that we passed last year really stressed equity. And so I think this is a, another opportunity that we can really maybe outline some concrete steps by what do we mean by that? And how do we know we've succeeded? Or how do we know we've made progress? So just another to-do thing for the list.
Right.
But thank you, everybody, for your comments. And, and it, as noted, it, it is an ongoing conversation. And Carlos will, will look at you as a point in the Health and Wellness and, and then Ms. Viveros for the, the committee as well. So thank you. All right. Steve, are there any other comments? I don't want to move on.
No, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the school committee minutes of May 5th, 2020?
Second.
I have a first and a second. I now have to, we have to now do a roll call vote, so I do it in order of how I see people here. Mr. Pyero?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Ms. McDay?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Emily Copeland, aye, unanimous, seven zero. Can I have a motion for discussion and action on budget transfers for FY 2020?
Yes, though you make a motion that we have, that we discuss, that we have a discussion and action on the budget transfers for this year 2020. I thought for a minute you skipped and I am, but nevermind.
Did I? No, I don't think so. Okay, Mr. Diaro.
Yes, thank you. I'm asking tonight for you to approve transfers in the amount of $102,835 for the purchase of Spanish Social Studies, Psychology, and Algebra textbooks, and $53,920 for the purchase of 160 Chromebooks for distance learning. The, the offset for those budget transfers is coming out of transportation contractors.
Any questions? No? All right, we've had a motion and a second. And now I'm doing a roll call vote. Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Ms. McDay?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Pyero?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Emily Copeland, aye, unanimous, seven zero. Business item B, please.
I move for discussion and action on the Portsmouth High School Partial Roof Replacement Bid Award.
Second.
Mr. Diaro?
Yes, so on June 3rd, we publicly opened bids for the Portsmouth High School Partial Roof Replacement Project. This is a large section above the cafeteria and the kitchen. We had a very competitive bidding. We had five bids come in and Cape Way Roofing Systems was the low bidder at $494,500, which is below our capital budget. So I recommend you award the bid to Cape Way Roofing Systems in the amount of $494,500.
I just, I have one question.
Yes.
On these bids, do we seek references as part of the bid, or do we gather references upon our selection?
We, we, we would open the bids and then we would do reference checking. I, I would let you know that Cape Way has done all four of the roofs in Portsmouth since I've been here, and they've done a nice job in all of them.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Ms. McDay?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Pyero?
Aye.
Emily Copeland, aye, motion passes, seven zero. So I just want to remind everybody, I know Dr. Kenworthy did it at the beginning, but tomorrow night is the town budget hearing. And encourage people to attend. June 22nd is the final approval of the FY 21 budget by the town council. And then we will have our final school committee meeting of the year, June 23rd. These will all be by Zoom. And we hope that you can attend. We will now not be adjourning. We will be recessing back into executive session. Can I have a motion to return to executive session?
Don't move. Second.
Motion and second on the floor, calling for a vote. Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Ms. McDay?
Aye.
Mr. Pyero?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Ms. Copeland, aye, seven zero. We're now recessing into executive session. Thank you very much for coming and all the comments and discussion. And hope everybody has a good week.